Okay, let's call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing? Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. That would be April 20th, 2009. So moved.
Second?
Um, how did that work?[50.48][50.48](Laughter). Was it Stevenson and then Barnes?
That's fine.
Is that correct? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. Amy Richardson.
Good evening. Chief Bealley, please come forward. I'm Amy Richardson. I'm lieutenant, I'm the fire department here in the city. And I just came off four and a half years of active duty for the Army. And the entire time I've been gone, the city has been very supportive of me. The fire department's been supportive of me. I've had individuals helping me out with house, with everything else. I don't know how much you all realize, but over 50 percent of what the military does is garden reserve. So without employer support, there is absolutely no way the military could function and do the jobs we're doing now. You guys have helped me out a lot. You've given me a lot. Chief Bealley's working with me now as I'm doing my return to work, retraining, since I've been gone for so long. And I really greatly appreciate it. While I was on active duty, I put the fire department in for what's called a Patriot Award. It's something that is given to employers that go beyond in support of members of garden reserve. And so I'd like to present this to you.
Wow.[154.69][154.69](Applause).
Thank you very much, Amy. Next, Diane Marlin.
This is for Lynn.
Hi, flowers.
My name's Diane Marlin, 2203 Boudreaux Circle. On behalf of the residents of Ward Seven, I'd like to thank you, Lynn, for your service over the past four years. Your enthusiasm, energy, leadership, and hard work have made a significant impact on our ward and on our city. You focused your attention on economic development, public safety, improving the very appearance of many areas of the city. You run meetings very efficiently. You work with business leaders, and when necessary, you rolled up your sleeves, put on your gloves, and picked up trash. And I think this job requires a little bit of each. So these flowers will last you a few days, but the vase, I hope, will serve as a reminder of your service to the city. It's etched with the words, Lynn C. Barnes, Ward Seven, Urbana City Council, 2005 to 2009. So someone else's job is to keep it filled with roses for you. Again, our deepest thanks for a job well done. You are a tough act to follow, and I wish you the best in your next great adventure and hope that you have at least find some more time to play with your grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Diane.
Great.[255.68][255.68](Applause).
Lynn has gotten a lot of flowers tonight, and we all appreciate what you've done, Lynn. I know you did, you started off with just the crossing on Windsor Road. Got that done. The Public Works Department did a great job. It's the safest crossing I have ever used.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the work that you did on Philo Road. And I appreciate your good humor and your attention to business. You're very businesslike, but you're very pleasant about it, and that's a great combination. So thank you very much.
Thank you. May I say a few words?
Sure.
Okay. I want to thank all of you. It's been a pleasure to get to know each of you. I would have to say about my tenure here, I have learned so much, not only about just things I never thought about before, ever, above and beyond potholes, but also I've learned a lot about myself, you know, because as you grow and develop and have experiences that are different, you, you know, it just, it makes you expand. And I think I've learned some new skills because of interacting with you all. So I've, you've taught me much. I've appreciated how we've collaborated over the past four years, and I hope that you'll continue to take that forward into the next four years. And, I mean, for the most part, the same to gang, and Diane's just going to be an added plus. And so I think that that is going to be your mantra, you know, moving forward, just like I think it was these past four years. So it's been a good experience. Now I want to tell you, when I do come back to ever speak, I want you to limit me to five minutes.[358.06][358.06](Laughter) Okay? Because remember, when you think about efficiency, think of Lynn Barnes. Thank you very much.[365.12][365.12](Applause).
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Urbana City Council? Yes? Did you fill out a form? Right, okay, just state your name and address. I think we know who you are, but for the record. Thank you.
My name is Robert Dunn, and I live currently at 919 West White Street in Champaign. I would like to say a special thank you to Lynn Barnes for her wonderful communication via email with her constituents. As someone who's lived in Ward Seven for a period of time, it was very beneficial getting the email updates about what's going on. And I look forward to, I'm still getting the Southeast Urbana email updates, but I look forward to getting them from Diane Marlin. So I just, from an old constituent, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to old business. Ordinance number 2009-03-022, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Urbana regarding the Schedule of Fees. And this has been sent from the March 16th council. And we have Dolores Seabrick here to explain it.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself because of a potential conflict of interest with regard to this particular ordinance.
Okay.
So, thank you.
As per ordinance, the Schedule of Fees has been published at the city clerk's office and online for over 30 days. During that time, I did not receive any public input on it. So it is as it was presented to you back in April.
Heather?
Does this include the new ambulance fees that were proposed?
That's correct.
With that being said, I would move that we send this to our next council meeting because, not committee, because that's next week. Could we move it to our second? I guess that would be the best thing. I think Champaign, my understanding is Champaign is going to be looking at the ambulance fees and have a study session about it. I think that it would behoove us to wait.
Okay, I think Ron has a comment. Ron Eldridge?
If we want to wait and study the ambulance or another certain part of it for Champaign, I would suggest that we just take that part out, and we can, we can add that, do that part later if we want to after Champaign.
Okay.
But rather than hold up all the other fees, because we do have to get that licenses and notices out to all the businesses and vendors.
Then could I move that, we move, amend it to remove the ambulance fees?
What, okay.
And I'll second that, too.
Okay, we have two seconds to that one, but that's okay.
I'll third it.
Okay, do we, you could just move to, well, we'll just vote on the excluding of the ambulance. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Someone would like to move the rest of the ordinance? Brandon?
I guess before we do that, I did have a question about one of the other categories, which is the parking fee change. And I wondered whether either of you, Ron or Dolores, remembered when it originally came to council in March, there was the change to a 50 cent fee, I think, for parking meter zones. And in talking since then with Pat Paletti, I think that wasn't intended to be in at this time. Since there wasn't a new version in the packet, I didn't know if that change had already been made or, or what? Can one of you let me know?
Right, it will be made now. We'll publish the final fee schedule, and yes, that was removed.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, shouldn't have been in there.
Okay, yeah. Obviously, when we take in the whole parking discussion, that'll be part of it, is what the fees are.
Right, that's correct.
But, good.
It was removed.
Okay, it was removed, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, great.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the fee schedule excluding the ambulance?
I'll make that motion to approve the fee schedule as printed, excluding the ambulance.
Okay. Motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Charlie Smythe. Any further discussion? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. We don't have any reports of standing committees. So next is the oath of office, and maybe we'd like to give Lynn her nameplate.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that would be appropriate.
This is a man's exit.
Yeah, this is it.
You're burdened with flowers and a nameplate. Okay, we'll give you a standing ovation.[715.12][715.12](Applause).
You've got lots of flowers.
Thank you, guys. I'll be back soon.
Okay.
Very nice.
Okay, oath of office. First, the clerk is going to swear in the mayor, then the mayor's going to swear in the clerk, and then the mayor will swear in the council members. Repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name, please.
Aye, Laurel Led Pressing.
Having been elected to the office of mayor?
Having been elected to the office of mayor?
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign, Illinois?
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign, Illinois?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of mayor of the city of Urbana?
Of mayor of the city of Urbana?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.[821.12][821.12](Applause). Okay, we'd like you to raise your right hand, please.[832.42][832.42](Laughter). Okay. I?
I, Phyllis D. Clark.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk?
Having been elected to the office of city clerk?
In the city of Urbana?
In the city of Urbana?
In the county of Champaign, Illinois, aforesaid?
In the county of Champaign, Illinois, aforesaid?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office?
Of city clerk in the city of Urbana?
Of city clerk in the city of Urbana?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, madam.[883.62][883.62](Applause). Okay, so now, would all the council members please stand and raise your right hand? And this is going to get tricky, because you're going to have to read your, you're going to have to say your name and your ward. Can you guys remember your name and your ward? Okay.
I will try.
At the same time. You'll all have to say it. If you make a mistake, nobody will notice, because they'll never hear you. Okay, I will say aye, and then you repeat your names. Aye?
Aye.
Dennis Roberts.
Having been elected to the office?
Having been elected to the office.
Of city council?
Of city council.
Ward five.
Ward five. In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign?
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champaign.
Illinois, aforesaid?
Illinois, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of the Urbana City Council?
Of the office of the Urbana City Council?
Ward?
Ward five.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you.[972.88][972.88](Applause). And I think that the clerk would like us all to sign these certificates. So you sign your name as it's printed there. Yeah, and then we'll have the clerk sign all the certificates, and that's it. Now we'll have the roll call for the new council. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Present.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing? Here. Reports of officers. Looks like we have Bill Gray, Director of Public Works, first.
Thank you. Welcome new council members for another four years, mayor, city clerk. I just wanted to inform you that this Wednesday, there's a Champaign County Lobby Day. There'll be over 30 community leaders boarding the bus at 6:30 in the morning to go to Springfield to meet with our legislators and other officials. In particular, my role will be to help promote Olympian Drive and to try to get any state funding we can on behalf of the county and city of Champaign and Urbana and start that project off. So I just want to let you know that in conjunction to hopefully a capital bill or any kind of income tax increases that may go towards roads, that we get our placeholder in, if you will, and try to get some help from the state. So that's it.
Do you want to stay for the, that first resolution? Oh, reports of officers, do we have other officers who'd like to make a report? Libby Tyler, Community Development.
We'll also have an update from Tom Carino and from Kelly Hartford. But I did want to just take a moment to announce that we have two employees in Community Development who are certified as accredited professionals under LEED, that's Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And this is awarded to Steve Cochrane and Lisa Karcher.
Okay, Tom Carino, Economic Development Director.
Good evening. Everyone should have received electronically the Economic Development Report for this month. Just to highlight a few items, Amara Yoga and Arts at Lincoln Square is now open. The UBA also coordinated ribbon cuttings for Flourish Floral Design, Madeline Sugar Arts Studio and Furniture Lounge. And the city of Urbana staff facilitated a downtown neighborhood business group meeting at the Civic Center in April as well. Philo Road area, the city is in the middle of construction implementation for the Philo Road Beautification Plan. Renovations are continuing at Burger King at the former Centura Bank Building. Heartland Bank is scheduled to open most likely sometime this week along Philo Road, so that's a great addition to the corridor. And staff attended the groundbreaking for Free Star Bank located on an outlot at Meyer. So lots of development in Southeast Urbana. The Boneyard Arts Festival took place in April. Attendance numbers were the highest so far for the Boneyard. This year, they divided it up into sections, and that seemed to be very successful in that the feedback we're getting from businesses on that Saturday was that business was just spectacular. So very well attended. There are, there was a notice of funding availability. The Urbana Arts Grant Program has been launched, and we're still accepting applications for those grants. So if anyone is interested, please check out our website for applications. And if you have any questions, contact Anna Hulter here at the city. Market at the Square kicked off successfully this weekend. That was our first market of the season. Not much produce yet, but attendance was very high, and a number of vendors were there. So a lot of activity there. Staff attended the National League of Cities, Green Cities Conference, also held this April. And staff exhibited at the Business Expo at the Assembly Hall on April 1st. And then also attended the UBA Realtor Bus Tour, which is an opportunity to showcase new developments, the schools, the parks, anything in Urbana that might be of interest to a Realtor to help them sell the community. So that was also on April 1st. So a lot of activity this month. If you're happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Well, I've invited, okay, Kelly? Okay, Kelly Hartford.
Yes, I just wanted to give you an update regarding the consolidated social service funding. We now have an estimated amount that's available. It's $312,760, which is an increase of over $12,000 from last year. It's three, three funds, the three pots of money, the CDPG Cunningham Township and the general funds. I have them broken down if you want to know how much each is, but the total is $312,760 available. And then I met with, you want to?
Actually, I did want to ask, what is the breakdown on that? If you've got the numbers right in front of you.
Sure, the Community Development Block Grant portion's $12,500, Cunningham Township $85,000, and the City General Funds $215,260.
Okay, thank you.
And then I had met with Mr. Garrick, and we came up with a timeline as far as starting to review the applications and have them completed, reviewed, I think it was by this evening, so that then you can start looking at funding, the funding eligibility matrix that I sent out, to start working on that, to have it completed by the 11th, I believe is what we had. And then on the 18th of May, the averages and the suggested motion would be made available by Alderman Garrick. And then also discussion would begin regarding agencies to be funded and to make a case for an agency if there was not a majority supported. But hopefully by the end of the month, on May 25th, that there would be a motion for approval of the agencies to fund. And in the past, because of our Community Development Block Grant in Cunningham Township having certain restrictions, councils directed city staff, as well as Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office, to allocate where, once the funding is allocated, where the money will go under, what, certain pots? So that's something to keep in mind, too.
David?
I did want to mention that I've, I've got a sudden change of schedule. I will actually not be here on the 18th to present the suggested motion, but what I will do is hand it off to some random person, like maybe this guy to my right, and ask that he present it in my stead on the 18th. I won't be calling in, unfortunately. I'm going to be in a trip to Tucson, which would have been really terrific, maybe February or so, but by the time you get to May, then it's a different story, for a conference. So unfortunately, I won't be able to join you in calling.
Okay, thank you very much. I've invited the mayor of Carmel, Indiana, Jim Brainard, to come on the 11th to talk about roundabouts. They've put those in their city. And he'll talk about the education effort. But I did have a friend of mine who used to live in Urbana visit this weekend. She lives near Indianapolis now, and she says she goes out of her way to go on the routes that do have the roundabouts. She likes them that much. Charlie was there when she said that.
I could ask.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I'm not going to be here on May 18th. I've been invited to come to an international conference on climate change in Seoul, Korea. And you'll be happy to know that they're paying my way. I don't have enough money in my budget for that. So at some point, we will have a meeting of the minds on all these, this collection of ideas, because I know Charlie and the staff, some staff members went to Portland, Oregon. So this summer, I think we'll do the same thing we did four years ago, which is meet on the, the goals for the city for the next four years. And we can discuss all those kind of things in that same context. Heather?
It won't be Monday, the 25th, because that's Memorial Day. It would be Tuesday, the 26th, for the motion for approval.
Mm-hmm, right.
So I just wanted to make sure.
26th.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, Mary. So the, your just last comment about the city council goals, members of city councils goals, what was the date on that? Or what, are you estimating?
I think we'll just do the same thing that we did four years ago, just start meeting.
Have a caucus.
Yeah, have a caucus and just meet until we come up with what we think are the reasonable goals for this next four years.
Very good.
David?
I had one other unrelated thing, which is that I've just completed a program that is put on by the University of Illinois Police Training Institute. It's a 10-week program, or actually 11-week if you count the spring break, a program which is sponsored by the Urbana Police Department, along with the police departments of Champaign, University of Illinois, I believe the Champaign County Sheriff, and I think also Rantoul, and maybe some others I might be leaving out. It's intended for, it's a civilian police training institute where you get a chance to be exposed to various sides, facets of law enforcement work. And it was something that Chief Bealley recommended, and having been through it, and I believe this is also a program that Mayor Pressing has been through, I certainly recommend it as an opportunity to find out, even if you aren't on the city council, if you want to take a look at what law enforcement is, how it's actually practiced, what the training is like, all of the, the components of it. I think that it was time well spent. It's an annual program. When it rolls around next year, you might want to take a look at it. And thank you, Chief, for suggesting I do that.
Okay. Let's move on then to new business. Resolution number 2009-05-017R, a resolution urging passage of a comprehensive capital infrastructure program. And Bill Gray is here.
Thank you. The resolution before you is at the urging of the Illinois Municipal League at a meeting I was asked a couple of weeks ago, in that there was concern that for any capital bill that may be developed and funded, that it may exclude any increases to municipalities, i.e., 100% of the money going to I.D.O.S. or what have you. So municipalities, townships, counties throughout the state are looking at very similar language in passing to make sure legislators, our governor knows that we're all needing additional revenues, that costs have really gone up over the last 10 years, and yet revenues have essentially remained flat, which means we can do less work in our streets in particular. So. So I would urge consideration of this resolution.
Thank you. Dennis?
I'd like to then make a motion to pass Resolution Number 2009-05-017R, a resolution urging the passage of a comprehensive capital infrastructure program.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is Ordinance Number 2009-05-043, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way. And this is Church Street between Kohler Avenue and Orchard Street. Bill Gray.
Thank you. The license agreement before you is very similar language to what we've used in other locations where an adjacent property owner would like to make use of or encumber in the city public right-of-way for a particular use. In this case, there's going to be a pickup area on the south side of Church Street between Orchard and Kohler, and there will be two columns to support an overhang from the building facility there to keep folks out of the weather. So we've looked at it, and the design is acceptable to us, but we need to let Carl realize that they're there at our pleasure, and if it's in the way for some reason in the future, or if there's utility conflicts or whatever there might be, that they would have to accommodate, you know, those needs in the future. So if there's any questions, they'd be happy to answer.
Heather?
I would move approval of ordinance Number 2009-05-043.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts. Is there any discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. Bill, are you aware of any underground lines, utilities that are actually under this section of the street that would probably likely be serviced?
Probably no. I'm not aware of any, so it's pretty remote.
Okay.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next is Ordinance Number 2009-05-044, an ordinance approving a major variance. This is the reduction of the front yard setback in the city's B3U, General Business University District from, there's been a correction, it's from 15 feet to five feet at 1011 West Clark Street.
That's right. I did hand out an updated copy of the ordinance itself. There was just a typo in the title. It sort of said five feet, and it said 10 feet. But in the body, it was all, it's all good. This is a corner lot at 1011 West Clark, the corner of Clark and Harvey. The lot has two front yards. In the B3U district, those front yards are required to be 15 feet. The petitioner is applying to encroach 10 feet or 66% into the front yard along Harvey Street, but not into the yard along Clark. The petitioner plans on demolishing the two existing homes, they're older buildings, and building a new apartment building on the site with approximately 14 to 18 units. And the ground floor will be consistent of parking. The building to the south of this received a similar variance to allow 10-foot encroachments along Harvey Streets. In 2005, it's the same ownership as the current property. And the setbacks would essentially match then. The general area is zone B3U, General Business University. The uses in the area are, to the west are all parking lots for the University of Illinois, and to the north, south, and east are other large multifamily structures. The variance is, the petitioner says it's, the variance is needed to maximize his investment in an area close to the University of Illinois Engineering Campus. In order to provide the type of housing that students expect now, the units need to be a little bigger. And this is a smaller lot, so he needs to expand his buildable area. The petitioner wants to contain the parking entirely beneath the footprint of the apartments, so it doesn't stick out. And he'd have walls along the sides, so it would look nice, it wouldn't be a building on stilts. Other developments in the area generally are built on multiple lots, more than one single-family lot. This lot is just one single-family lot, and with the corner of the two front yards, it's, doesn't have very much room to build on. So that necessitates the variance. Strictly speaking, the variance is not required for parking, the parking level, because parking can encroach, in the B3U district, parking can encroach up to 10 feet into the required 15-foot front yard if it's properly screened. But that would require the cars to stick out from underneath the building, and it would look like a building on stilts. So this variance allows for a better-looking solution. For variance cases, we have a six criteria. I'll just go through them really quick. Criteria one and two, there's a practical difficulty and special circumstances necessitating the variance are the small corner lots with the two front yard setbacks. Criterion three, the variance is due to the petitioner's desire to match the reduced setbacks along Harvey. Number four, the proposed variance will not alter the characters, the character of the neighborhood, basically the whole area's large apartment buildings that are, most of them are closer to the, to the property line than would be strictly allowed. Number five, proposed variance will not create a nuisance. Again, it's an area of student housing and parking lots, so it'll just be more of the same. And the sixth criterion, this is the minimum derivation to match the setback of the building that's to the due, due south of this property. The zoning board of appeals heard this case a couple of weeks ago. They voted seven to zero to forward it to council with the recommendation for approval subject to the following conditions. Those being, one, that the petitioner submit a landscape plan in compliance with the guidelines for landscape buffer yards for the reduced setback area in Section 6-6A of the zoning ordinance, subject to review and approval of the zoning administrator and city arborist. And second condition, the project shall conform to all other applicable zoning and building regulations, including open space ratios and parking module dimensions. And staff agrees with the recommendation for approval. If you have any questions, I can answer them, and the petitioner is also here.
Okay, who had their hand first? Yes, Howard Wakeland says he's willing to answer questions, if you have questions.
I was just going to make a motion for approval.
Okay, motion by Heather Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
With the corrected title.
Yeah, seconded by Robert Lewis. I think you got a revised, you should have gotten a revised copy that's dated today. Okay, any other discussion?
Yes.
Dennis?
All right. The two stipulations that were added by the zoning board, which had to do with the screening of the tree, the tree screening, the arbor, the little landscape layout, and the, what was the second one? Okay, I had them here. Meeting the other zoning regulations. And I know this is not, we haven't really seen, we haven't seen the plan yet. The third, the third thing that I was concerned about was that the, whatever arrangement was made for the garbage containers and the trash would be in enclosed space, and I believe that that'd be part of our ordinance. Is that, is that, is that an element that is guaranteed to be part of the plan for the building as well?
I'm sorry, I was distracted.
What I'm asking about is, I know that this is a very preliminary plan, but, and I know that the, the proposed building abuts an alleyway. My concern was that the, the trash receptacles be contained in a, in a, in a closed place that would be screened from view. Is that, is that an element that is required of all buildings in the B3 area for the view in this PDU or the, in this district?
I believe that is what we had added to the zoning ordinance. I want to double-check and make sure that it applies to all business properties and not just properties zoned for business, but not, but that have residential use.
Okay, so what I would suggest is that would be definitely a part of the accepted plan, and if it requires an amendment, I would make a motion for amendment.
Brandon, you had a question, too?
Yeah, and I don't know, Jeff, tell us if you want a second to look that up here, because my question is for you.
One, just take one question at a time?
Yeah. Don't hurt it.
Okay, yes, it should, it's required to be screened, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Jeff, my question is about screening as well. If we vote no on this and cause the building to be built according to the standard zoning ordinance rules, as, as was described in the memo, that would mean that the building would be setback 15 feet, like all the other buildings in this neighborhood. But the parking could encroach 10 feet into the 15 feet on the both front yards with properly screened design. What is the screening requirement there? I guess, is there an example of what it might look like, or how you could describe that? I'm having trouble picturing other buildings in that neighborhood, or even others, where the parking encroaches farther than the facade of the building. You know, the parking sticks out, but the building is set back. And what exactly that screening of the parking looks like? Are there any examples or description of what we can expect?
I can't really think of any examples, but the requirement is to have three bushes and one tree for every 40 feet. So that's what it would look like.
Okay, bushes and trees. And if we were to vote yes, and this building would get a special variance, you described then that the petitioner would do even more to screen the parking, like there would be a wall built, it wouldn't just be plants and landscaping, but the parking would be completely enclosed in the building in masonry? Or can you describe that option a little further?
Well, maybe the petitioner could address that a little more, since he hasn't made it clear to us, but I'm assuming it would look a lot like the adjacent building.
Uh-huh, okay.
Which is on Main Street. So it's, it's masonry, I think, with some siding and some holes for ventilation.
Ventilation, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I think, Charlie, did you have a question, too?
More a statement. I passed around some additional pictures here, and my apologies for the size, I need to do these real quickly. As you may recall, I opposed granting this variance in 2005. It was a mistake then, and I still think it's a mistake now, and perpetuating it further by extending it down further northward on Harvey, I think continues that mistake. I think it'd be inconsistent of me to, to favor this. The way I look at it, from the view on Harvey of the existing building that's on the south part of that block, you have a garage, basically a house on stilts. The entire structure is very utilitarian, has minimal landscaping, has no landscaping on the side where there's, where there's only five feet of right-of-way, or five feet of landscaping there. I mean, it's just completely bare. You see white drainage tiles, the silver items below, one of which is a close-up there, which has some trash bushes already trying to take over, some weedy magnol, I forget what the name of that plant is, a couple of weedy bushes there trying to take over. And so I just don't see the need to perpetuate the mistake and continue what to me is a less-than-appealing facade that would face, or potentially face institutional-quality university buildings in the future. When I opposed this three years ago, four years ago, when it was first put up, I said, why aren't we building on this location at a much higher density, a four or five-story building? And I gave the Gregory Street buildings of JSM, Greg I and Greg II, as examples of the sorts of things that we should be building in this part of the community. Higher density with more, and more uses, you know, residential office space and potential commercial. And I continue to believe that. So I think just putting up another three-story wooden apartment building is less-than-desirable use of this space. And so I will oppose this as before. Thank you.
Diane?
Just a couple of questions. In, in the materials, there's, it refers to a floor-area ratio. Is that the footprint of the building to the, to the size of the lot?
It's actually the gross floor area of the, of the building, so it's the footprint times the number of floors, yes, divided by the size of the lot. And that excludes utility space or basements.
Okay. And my other question was, it appears that there's going to be 14 to 18 units, so are they all two-bedroom?
I believe so.
So that's 28 to 36 people. What is the minimum required parking for that building, that size?
For a building with two-bedroom units, it would be one space per bedroom.
One parking space per bedroom?
I'm sorry, one space per unit.
Okay.
So it'd be 14 to 18.
Okay. Thank you.
Dennis Roberts?
It comes to mind that there is an example that we might recall of a building that was built that has the, the footprint of the building is, is smaller than the parking underneath it. And I don't remember the address, but it is on Nevada, Nevada Street, about two, two properties. It's on the south side of the street, next to Paradiso Cafe. And the cars do stick out from below the building, and the area above them is open, so that if it rained, the fronts of the cars get wet, unless there's an overhang roof. But a wall was built about shoulder-high, which screened the cars from, pretty much from view, from the, from the street. So that's an example. I actually have another question, too.
If I could respond to that. That's also from the side only.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and of course, it's part of that adjacent, the Paradiso property is sort of part of the same property, so there's an alleyway, you know, there's a walkway between that parking space and the Paradiso building. So it's sort of like one big lot, which it probably was way back whenever that structure was all built. So, yeah, and it's the side, it's not a corner lot. We have a corner lot situation here with, with facing a potential university building at some point in the future.
Okay.
Okay, Kate, did you have another question?
I actually had another question for Jeff. Looking at the block today, I saw that the existing building in the south, which is also, Mr. Wakeland owns that building, as I recall, the setback for that, Jeff, is that, is that a five-foot setback from the sidewalk?
Along Harvey, yes.
Okay. And it, it basically parallels the front of the enclosed, semi-enclosed porch to the small house that's directly to the north of it. It seemed like they lined up.
Yes.
So that porch, that porch also, it butts into the parkway, or the, the yard, the yard distance by that 10 feet extra.
About nine feet for the porch.
Nine feet, okay. So that would be pretty much where the outer wall of the building would be.
Correct.
Along that line. But on Clark Street, the 15-foot setback is But on Clark Street, the 15-foot setback is being adhered to, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. What about in the alleyway? What's the setback along the alley? Is there a setback in alleyways?
Yes, well, there's a rear yard setback.
Is that being used?
So...
Is that being taken up, or is that being honored?
I don't think he's encroaching into that, no.
Okay, all right.
Brandon?
So, yeah, briefly, I'll just tell people sort of my rationale. I'm going to vote no on this, as I did in 2005, and my reasoning is, much as it was then, when, you know, when I drive through this neighborhood, still, all the buildings, except the one that in 2005 did eventually get this variance, all the buildings adhere to the setback, all the modern apartment buildings are 15 feet back, and you can see them all lined up, ducks in a row. And the reason for this variance, to me, doesn't quite pan out. As I look at the criteria and the rules for what determines a variance, I know we've heard, you know, as Jeff said, that obviously the developer's stated reason is to maximize his investment in this property, and it's fair for developers to try to maximize their investment, but that is not ground to grant a variance, you know? We shouldn't have any setbacks. Anytime someone comes to us, if that were a valid reason, we would throw out the zoning ordinance. And that's obviously not the right way to decide on a variance. The other reasons given are, you know, that it's a small lot, or it's on a corner. Well, in this whole neighborhood, the lots are small, and there are corners every block. Every four, you know, every block has four corners, every intersection, and so I guess saying that, for some reason, our zoning ordinance shouldn't apply for corner lots, also to me doesn't really fit the rules. All the other buildings that are on corner lots, again, sit back 15 feet from both sides. That's how I felt four years ago, and that's how I still feel. If the zoning ordinance is wrong, and what's best for this neighborhood is a five-foot setback, then we should have those discussions, and, you know, we didn't in the last four years, this is what I said last time. If the zoning ordinance is wrong, let's talk about it, let's set standards that everyone can follow. But, let's not, on a case-by-case basis, say, well, we'll throw out the zoning ordinance. Everybody else developing buildings in this neighborhood has followed the ordinance and managed to build. So, I don't see anything really truly unique about this property. And when, you know, when the variance criteria say, what's the special circumstance, being on a corner and seeking to maximize investment aren't a special circumstance in my mind. So, I don't feel that this variance meets the criteria, and I'm going to vote no. I definitely want a quality development, I definitely want the parking to be a little more screened, and I like the idea that we might have some masonry or something, but really, the full 15 feet of setback with space is what the zoning ordinance states, and that's what I think is fair, until such time as we should all really change the direction that this neighborhood is going in by changing the zoning ordinance. So, I'll be voting no tonight. Thank you.
Heather?
Well, we have a zoning board of appeals for a reason, and that is to go by a case-by-case basis, or we wouldn't need the zoning board of appeals. And clearly, they voted seven to nothing that this should go ahead with the approval of the council, and, yes, it's a major variance, but if the zoning board of appeals came back with a different vote, then I would clearly look at it a little more closely and say maybe something different. But, I believe that they do a really good job of taking each case, a case-by-case basis, and making quality, fair-minded decisions when it comes to these kinds of things, and that's why I will vote yes, and why I made the motion to approve this.
Anyone else? Dennis?
No, I guess three times is as many as I can do. Well, then, by the pleasure of the council, I might ask one more question. Jeff, if the buildings were brought forward in the future by the university, and they were constructed in the parking lot across the street, would they, by right, have a, would they be built up to the sidewalk in the urban style of construction that was considered retail and commercial slash residential, business combination of construction?
Well, this, directly across the street is the same zoning district, B3U. I really can't say as to what kind of construction the university is planning, but in theory, they would need to adhere to the zoning ordinance or get a variance.
So they would be required to have a 15-foot setback?
Yes.
And what I'm wondering is, there was a discussion that there was, this district was considered to be especially marked for high-density, combination of commercial and residential, and with an urban feel. And to the north, we just recently had a building constructed on University Street that has almost no setbacks. It comes right up to the sidewalk. And in the comprehensive plan, does it discuss this kind of urbanized structure for construction and development?
Yes, it does. It's both in the B3U description and the zoning ordinance, and also in the comprehensive plan. I think there are some notes about the future land use for this area being designated as campus mixed-use, which generally means mixed-use buildings that are larger and do have reduced setbacks, they are built up to the street.
Okay.
Diane?
Just one more comment. In reading through the materials, something that Mr. Wakeland had presented at one of his meetings caught my eye, where he mentioned that to build a building now for student rental, you almost always have to have a private bathroom for each bedroom, and that, from personal experience, I know it's increasingly hard to rent anything without a bathroom and a bedroom for each person, and that significantly affects the size of buildings that we're going to be seeing in the future, and the cost of these buildings. So I, just something to keep in mind when you're thinking about future regulations, it makes a big difference.
I'd like to point out to Dennis that asking questions doesn't go against your two debate sessions here, so you actually still have two to go, Dennis, I think.
I see. So... But I'm running out now.
Well, you've only been saying, you've only been asking questions, you haven't been making comments. I guess what I'd like to point out is that, yeah, the new urbanism calls for walkable, bikeable neighborhoods with your buildings at the edge of the, you know, right up close to the street and the parking behind. But at the same time, we also need to be dealing with things like storm runoff, other sustainability issues. You know, this building, just simply by being bigger, is going to put more water in the storm sewers. Having more bathrooms or whatever, I'm not sure if it's going to, that's going to generate more use of water and put more pressure on the sewer system in this area or not. This is one of the older parts of town. Both of those are much older structures, and will need to be dealt with. But my bigger concern here is, you know, we can be doing much better buildings with much better designs to lead standards with bioswales, green roofs, all that sort of thing, and yet, we, again and again, we're getting these three-story wooden buildings with no special features, no addressing the issues of concern of today of sustainability and so on. And I don't see that this is any exception, and which is going to be completely in contrast to the case we're going to see in just a moment from Neighbor House, where they are doing these sorts of things, okay? They're asking for a very significant, in their, some very significant concessions in their planned unit development, but the flip side is that they're putting in all these sustainability things. So these two cases are a perfect contrast of what we want and what we don't want in this community. So, again, I think this is an example of what we don't want. Thank you.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowers. Oh, did you want to comment on something? Okay, come on up and...
You don't have to sign in here tonight, but I am Howard Wakeland, I think most of you know that. I live at 1811A Amber. It's a little hard to know exactly where to start, because there's all kinds of questions here, which I think do not relate to the question that we're asking tonight. The question we asked tonight was, would you give us a footprint to let us know what footprint we have to work in on this lot? That's the question. It's not about whether it's a six-story building, or it's a one-story building. It's not about whether we're going to meet city requirements. We will meet every city requirement to send the regulations. It's not that we are trying to cheat on the kind of zoning that you folks have established for this area. I don't mean you individually, but the city council is the one who established all these regulations. There's nothing in there about a six-story building. There's nothing in there about a one-story building. And where does all of this, Dennis, come from when we are asking you, what is the footprint you're going to allow? Sounds like we're in danger of not being allowed a footprint. We had a meeting with the zoning board of appeals two weeks ago. I thought it was a good meeting. And virtually every question you asked was answered in that meeting. Now, if you don't take the time, I'm willing to go through that. I am not ashamed of what we build in this area. I am proud of what we build, and we have almost a zero police record of people coming and trying to arrest people, or drinking, or whatever. We have a set of plans, I mean, before we ever put anything on a piece of paper, we have a set of rules that we follow in building a building. So it's not as if we're just willy-nilly throwing something out there that you don't like. And so you know what we do build, is watch the pictures. There's a few of these that we purchased. But these are copies of pictures of the buildings that we have built in this area. There are a couple of buildings that we have bought that have certain apartments, but the vast majority of under the building are apartments, and go under the apartment buildings we have in this area. I think you should remember that April Gatchis, who is a very bright, sharp city employee, is one, I believe, I can't, I don't expect to prove this, was the one who said, look, contractors must have an area in the city to work in. And I believe it was C. that proposed the B3U zoning ordinance. And it was intended to encourage people to come in and build. We have tried to take advantage of that zoning area, and we have tried to do everything we can to stay out of the rest of the city, which is not something that you're generally aware of. We have never bought a property in Urbana. Well, I take that back. In recent years, or back when, we bought some properties way over on West Clark, clear up against the baseball field, that everybody was in anticipation that area was going to change. And we bought a few properties there that were not zoned for apartments when we went in there. And we anticipated that zoning would be allowed for apartments. The city did not allow zoning for apartments in the area that I'm talking about, and we were trapped. So I sold all of that property. I sold 11 properties there to the university, because we could not get the freedom to build. So what happened? The city lost. We didn't get zoning, the city purchased it, it's now part of the university land, and some of that is still not developed. But B3U was designed specifically for builders and to allow some freedom. Now, you say you have not allowed anybody else to do this. Have you looked at the new project just finished on the corner of University and Lincoln? Along Clark Street? There were several variances given. I didn't fight them, because I think it's good, but we had a property right in the middle of that. You closed an alley for them. So, special things have happened. Now, it's not the same kind of a zoning area, but the beautiful building that JSM built down, oh boy, what is it, on Oregon or whatever, there's all kinds of arrangements that were made to allow them to do that. They are very first-class buildings, and they're a step above what we're doing. There's no question about that. However, maybe someday we will get there. So that, I'm astounded by the kinds of questions that are coming in. Let me re- we could go on here for two hours, I can't do that. Charlie, if we had the money to build a six-story building, we would have built a six-story building. But where would the other $5 million to $8 million come from? We were trying to do the best we could in the city of Urbana within the limits of the zoning that you people have created. You or your forefathers, or foremothers, or whatever. We're trying to live within the law. In this request that we give you tonight, we're not asking for a variance on parking, we're not asking for a variance on living space or anything else. We are asking you, what footprint can we use? If you pass it, great, we get a little bit bigger footprint. If you don't, we build with the old rule. But you're going to have a building there someday, whether it's a 10-year building, or a 50-year building, or a 200-year building. And you're not going to have any own control over that if you don't do something for us tonight. We'll just go back to the old rules, same we've done, what we've done before, and build that way if that's what you want. Again, I want to repeat, we are not asking for any forgiveness or special arrangement on any of the rules that you folks have written, with the exception of the footprint itself. That's all we're asking for. We can meet every other regulation that you've written. Who wins? The way we have proposed it, we think we have a win-win situation. The city gets more property tax if we get a bigger footprint. We pay more real estate tax if we get a bigger footprint. This year, our real estate tax will be nearly $600,000 that we pay in the city. So we are not niggardly owners. We are supporting your schools, we are supporting the streets, we are supporting everything that this city wants. You know, I'm not, I'm not really upset. If you want us to build a small building, we build a small building. Or we leave the junkers there. We don't care. If you give us a bigger footprint, we'll go ahead and we'll try to do something. We'll try to improve. You may not like the buildings we like, but we have rented every room 100% for the last 30 years. And that says something about our operation. We have not had one student complaint in 15 years. We're doing something right, regardless what you may think. We're doing something right, regardless what you may think. I don't believe that the zoning board of appeals were a bunch of dummies. I think they looked at this very carefully and then he gave us unanimous support. Are we receiving equal treatment to other things that have happened in the district? Certainly with the new building on the corner of University and Lincoln, I can't even figure out where their five-foot variance, not a variance, their five-foot is from the edge of the property. The sidewalk goes right up to their front door. I mean, they've been given all kinds of special privileges in there and I am for that. That's a great building. I'm happy they're there. I would hope that someday we might be able to match them. We turned down, and the mayor is aware of this, I think, a hotel on our corner this last year. We have been working for three years. Now, I'm talking about the corner across the street to the east from the new buildings that's on University and Lincoln. We didn't think it quite fit what we should have on that corner. So we backed off again. Maybe we just should have gone ahead and slam-bam, got it done. What you're suggesting is, if you turn us down tonight, well, no, that's not true. But in my opinion, you're not living by the rules that you folks have written. That's my view. Now, if that's the case, go ahead and we'll either leave a smaller building or leave the house a stand. Whatever, don't care.
Okay. Would you be willing to answer questions if people have questions?
I'd be loved to answer any questions you got.
Anybody have a question? Dennis?
Yeah. Hi, Howard. One of the main arguments or reasons that you talked about having the large-
You want what now?
One of the main arguments that you proposed at the zoning board review about the larger, need for larger setback, or a setback into the, reduce the setback, was to enclose the parking under the building rather than have it stick out. So can you describe how you're going to encase or enclose the parking under the building? Are you going to enclose it similar to the one that was built to the south of it? Having a three-foot-high wall separating the parking area from the exterior of the building? Or are you going to enclose it completely?
Let me try to answer that for you. First of all, I have not decided of this particular building, if you give us a footprint, whether it will be underground or whether it will be first floor. However, it will be enclosed. If we do it on the first floor, it will be enclosed like the building to the south, which has apartments on the front and underground, and the only way you can get in there is from the alley. I don't want to promise that we're going to duplicate that building, but I want to say that the parking will either be on the first floor and enclosed, or it will be at a basement level and enclosed, one or the other.
So are you considering doing a sub-level parking garage potentially?
You mean a basement?
A basement parking garage?
Yes. We are considering. I'm not promising. I'm saying we are considering. The whole thing arises because parking is what determines the size of your building. And if you can increase the parking just slightly, you can build your building a little larger. Now, there's other things that have happened in the market you may or may not be aware of. For instance, the modern thing now is a bathroom for every apartment. And that means that a bathroom for every apartment, that means a little bit more space in that apartment, et cetera, et cetera. So that it is harder now to build 10 apartments than it was. That is, if you want to stay with the modern people, if you want to stay with the 20-story buildings. We are actually outranking the very high buildings right now in terms of percentage and time. And I don't know, you've been very gracious. You've given me a lot of time and I ought to shut up and get out of here. But I do have an apartment building philosophy which I'd be happy to share if you want it. But we build only one- and two-bedroom apartment units. Why? We can control it better. We have a lot less damage. We have a lot less law enforcement. We don't have beer parties. The fraternity doesn't come over on Saturday for the weekend. Those things don't happen in our buildings because we don't want them. So that we, contrary to what you may think, we have built a strong attitude with what we want to build and what we don't want to build. Another thing, once you get three or four people in an apartment, you're always going to have arguments among them. You're going to have them fighting about who's going to pay the rent and on and on and on. And it's just so much easier to have one- and two-bedroom apartments. So I don't know what you know about us. We have laundries in every apartment. All of the, you know, all of the things that they need, this, the microwave, ovens and the whole bit. And we don't want them bringing furniture in. We furnish everything because we want to keep stuff up. We want to keep it modest. We want to keep it nice. And you know who really enjoys that? The parents who don't have to haul grandma's couch down from Winnetka or somewhere. And they are so happy when they move in and they're happy to have, we move in, this is ours, we like it, we're going to be here for a year or whatever. So we have tried very hard to do a good job. With all of that, I, whatever you want to do, go ahead and do it. But I am telling you that we have been good builders. We have been good property owners. We've been good taxpayers. And we have lived totally within the regulations that this city group has set forth. I'll be happy to answer any question you have.
I know you have a good reputation with the tenant union.
I know we do.
It's exactly because of your reputation for quality construction, great management, that I've asked, that I asked you three and a half years ago to build something bigger and more elaborate in this location, you know, up against the university. Something more institutional quality, which is what was built at the corner of Lincoln and, and university. It's a four-story masonry institutional quality building. What you've got given here, what you describe in the documents, is essentially another three-story wood-framed building.
You are correct.
And, and, you know, that's, I mean, that's what, that's what we're going to get. We're going to get another three-story wood-framed building, whether you do underground parking or not. You know, so you're going to get, you know, you give us a count of 14 to 18 apartments, so that's parking plus two stories. I get a three-story building, which is what you can do by right in B3U. If you're going to go bigger institutional quality, then we have a whole nother discussion about what the setbacks are and what additional energy features you might put in, green roof, bio swales, all that sort of thing. If you were doing those sorts of things, we'd be having a completely different kind of discussion. And that's what I'm saying. What you've proposed here, and the reason I object, is because it isn't one of these other things. It's just another three-story apartment building. And, and, you know, that's, I mean, that's what you've given us here. Isn't that correct?
Yes, Charlie, but let's give you a choice. What do you want? Do you want a three-story building which brings in more taxes and is a pleasant place and people like it and get along and we don't have the police in there every weekend and that sort of thing? Or do you want us to build a smaller one, which will get-
No, I want you to build a bigger one. I want you to build a bigger one.
Um, Charlie, let him answer the question.
We've borrowed over $5 million in the one we built. Now, Vercher, do you have another $5 million you would like to loan us? Do you? So you are the one who's making the choice, not me. We are over there trying to do the best job we can with the money we have available. And we have put over $30 million into new buildings in Urbana. That's a pretty damn good chunk of change, I'll have to tell you. And I, I get upset when you tell me we're not putting enough money in our buildings. I know that it would be nice to have a six-story building or a 10-story building. We don't have that kind of money. And very few people do. In fact, we've got somebody on a grill right now that was going to come in two years ago, and I don't know where they are now, but they've disappeared at least for the moment. And maybe they're going to come back. You probably know more about there than I do. But people who have come and going to be doing big things, a lot of them have backed off and run.
I'll grant you the economy is not the best of time, but again, we get back to the same point. Several years ago, when the economy was better, financing was out there to do something bigger. And that's my point, is that, you know, if you want an exception to the zoning stuff, what are you providing in return, other than just another three-story apartment building?
Charlie, okay, we're going to build, we built a three-story building, okay? We were able to handle it. But if we go for a six-story building, we've got to find somebody who's a sucker enough to put in 90%. That's a tough loan. That's a tough loan. And I don't want to have that kind of, I don't want to have my rear end nailed to the property here so that I can't do something else. Let me say to you, I don't understand why the negativism with us. Because my son and my daughter are looking forward to being business people in the city of Urbana. And you build a step at a time, one building at a time. We couldn't have put up that $5 million building five years ago. Now, we are buying other land in that area that we have a bigger goal. But I'm not going to tell you what it is because we may or may not achieve it. We may even get you a six-story building. I don't know. But you don't have a choice. We've got one lot. And you're either going to leave it there with two houses on it, or we're going to tear those down and leave it empty, or we're going to put a small apartment building in there, or we're going to put a large building in it. That's your choices now. I can't buy the property next door to it. They won't sell. Okay? So we've got one lot that we're going to do something with. All right?
Okay. Thank you. Dennis?
Okay. I guess I'm going to, this is a comment for the, this is, I guess-
This counts.
This counts.
I think I do, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wakelin. All right. I think that the city council probably would like to see, you know, aggressive and handsome buildings built as often as possible within the city limits with as many amenities and with as good materials as possible. That's certainly the goal that we have. And we would hope that as Mr. Wakelin begins to work with an architect on his buildings, whatever buildings they might be, he would begin to consider some of Charlie's ideas and consider, you know, incorporating, you know, green technology into his buildings, possibly working with the facade of his buildings in a more thoughtful manner that would include brick and limestone features which make some of the other buildings on the university campus and produced by some other of the developers more attractive and more, more attractive to the eye and, and more compatible with the look of the university's structured buildings. If you go to this neighborhood, you'll see that the entire blocks along north of Main Street are basically filled with large-scale apartment houses. And they do follow common setback lines along the, along the blocks that they're on. They all are made of modern materials, which I think that the Historic Preservation Commission would be somewhat upset about because these are vinyl-sided buildings with vinyl windows. And we know for a fact that although they're very attractive and they're very, these are very affordable building materials today, they do not have as long of a shelf life along as a sustainability pattern as more durable materials. So we actually would prefer to see the highest-quality materials placed in the buildings that we could get. The designs do not necessarily contribute to the overall historic look of what the neighborhood might have been 30 years ago, but I do see that these neighborhoods have transformed. And I would call this, that this section of our town between Main Street, Clark, and university is basically occupied by what I would call boxcar construction apartments. And they may be, you know, fairly nice-looking and well-painted, but they're basically square and with very few features, some gables here and there. Although this is not my ideal, I think that we have to accept what's being offered by the developer and what's possible by this developer who owns the property. Now, this gentleman owns the land and he's proposing what he sees as viable building construction. It may not meet what our hopes are, but this is what we have to, this is what we're looking at today at this point. That's why I make these comments, encouraging him to reconsider some of the materials he uses and to encourage his architect to look around and provide us with maybe a more inspired facades. On the other hand, we have a question of the setback and whether, whether this building should, should, but, or far, take up some of the parkland area around the building and use up some of the side yard. I think that it's important to keep the side, the 15-foot setback on Clark Street because there, that setback is the standard depth of the property. On the north-south street, on Clark Street, or on Harvey Street, we already have a building on the block that goes into the setback. The porch on the old building, immediately to the north, abuts into the 15-foot setback already. And so I think that I'm not so concerned about losing, losing that part of the exterior open space. So although it's not, it's not my ideal and I kind of regret the lack of inspiration, it seems to me that this fits the neighborhood and basically, basically is an acceptable, equal member of the building structures that we have there already. So I don't have as much of a concern in saying that, that I could support this building as it's been shown.
Okay. Brandon?
Yeah. Howard, I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight and saying what you did. I do definitely agree, people love your apartments. The units inside have fabulous amenities. I hear, I've heard this for years from a number of people and it's true. And so I thank you absolutely for that. We, we definitely might disagree on the facts of the case. One thing you said really struck me, which is we do have to stick to the facts and weigh this variance by the criteria that we're bound to. And, you know, I guess I love sustainability and I love gables and I love masonry rather than vinyl siding, but, but actually, for me, in making this decision, I have to stick to the criteria before me. It's not, you know, could this be a building like the one at the corner of Lincoln University? That's not the criteria. It's, it's there's something specific about this property that it can't follow the rules that the other properties in the district and the neighborhood followed. And to me, I don't see something specific that, that means that this property couldn't follow those same rules. So we disagree on this one, on the facts, Howard, but I do appreciate you coming and coming in a positive spirit. And I do look forward to continuing to work with you and your children. You, you guys do run a good operation, so thank you.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Powersox?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Resolution number 2009-05-018R. A resolution of protest against a proposed tax amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. And this is a request by the Champaign County zoning administrator to amend their zoning ordinance concerning wind-termed developments. This is wind farms. And I, okay, here we have Lisa.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to refresh our memories on this one?
Sure, absolutely. Under the existing Champaign County ordinance, it allows wind turbines, one to three, as a special use by the ZBA in four districts, Act One, Act Two, and the light and heavy industrial. For larger developments greater than three wind farms, they're allowed by ZBA special use permit in the I-2 district only. So what you have before you is a proposal to allow wind farm developments approved by the county board as opposed to the zoning board of appeals in Act One. And the difference in addition to that is the fact that they have set up specific standards for special use permits for approval. Currently, there are no specific standards, so if one came in, it would just be- in, it would just be the criteria, kind of like you saw here for variances under the special uses. What makes this different than other protests that we, or other protests, I shouldn't say protests, other cases that we have seen, is that, um, the, the state statutes, where typically in our ETJ, we review for any kind of text or zoning amendment, we still have subdivision authority, whereas the county has zoning authority. That's kind of been flipped in this case, or not flipped, but changed because of state law, which gives the authority to regulate wind farms and wind turbines in the ETJ to the municipality instead of the county. So this is the one case that the city actually has zoning jurisdiction outside of their political boundaries. So the text amendment that's before you and what's in the existing zoning ordinance at the county level does not apply to our ETJ. So in that respect, it's different in the way we review it, because there's minimal impact on our ETJ, with the exception of if a wind farm is built adjacent to, to the ETJ. Um, as you saw in our memo, we noted that the city doesn't explicitly have regulations for wind turbines, and that as a goal in the comprehensive plan, um, it was to look into alternate energy sources. So that, that is something that at the staff level we'd be looking into for regulations, both in the ETJ as well as in the city itself. Um, one of the issues that we pointed out in the memo, that there was concern by, um, the public in general, were protest rights. In addition to cities and townships having protest rights to zoning, um, zoning text amendment and zoning changes, there's also protest rights for zoning amendments and, um, changes in zoning for property owners, similar to what's in the city of Urbana's zoning ordinance. So the alternatives that were originally looked at when the wind farm language started in the early stages was to allow approval by the special use permit by the county board, which you see here tonight. And the second alternative was to allow approval by the county board of a special use permit, but also to include a rezoning. So to have a wind farm, you'd have to get a special use permit and rezoning. And the purpose, um, some of the concern with individuals in what has come forward, where that text amendment, the change in the zoning is no longer part of the recommendation, is that property owners would not have protest rights, which would mean, when this went to the county board, they'd have to have a, um, instead of a simple majority, they'd have to have a supermajority if there were protest rights put in, into place, similar as when the city would protest. Essentially, from the city's perspective, there's little impact, because it's not covered in the ETJ. Um, so from that perspective, there's not a lot of impact. So, you know, from our perspective, you know, it, approval either way is acceptable. Essentially, with the conditions that are outlined in your memo, they have specific conditions to mitigate the impacts of wind farms that, um, that would, you know, mitigate anything through the special use permit. So the Plan Commission reviewed the recommendation, or the text amendment, at their April 23rd meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend to city council that, uh, the protests be defeated, the resolution of protests be defeated. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have specific.
Go ahead, Charlie. Charlie?
I'd, I'd just like to move Resolution Number 2009-05-18R. Resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champagne County zoning ordinance.
Second. Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Heather?
Well, um, didn't you just say that you guys proposed that we defeat the protest?
Right. You'd have to vote no. You have to make a motion, but then we have to vote no.
Okay, and, um...
You have to destroy the motion in order to save it.
That's right.
And it just seems, that's, my question was, for a city who says we want to go green, to have a protest against wind farms seems like, uh, an oxymoron. And so that's why I'm like, wait a minute.
Okay. Um, Dennis, did you have a comment, too?
A question, I guess.
A question. Questions don't count, but comments do.
My count.
If you phrase it, if you phrase it right. Okay, Dennis?
So, um, this, uh, this requirement, or this, uh, motion, has to do with A1 agricultural, agricultural, that's the, that's the zoning group that it is. And it, and it's, and this is outside of our ETJ. This has to do with the exterior, next to, the only impact might be if there was one near the ETJ limit. And is there a reason why, um, the other levels of zoning have not been addressed in this ordinance by the county? Like, you know, what's the difference between choosing A1 over A2 for include, wind farm inclusion, you know, discussion?
Yeah, originally, in the, um, existing ordinance, it's allowed in the industrial. And I think that in, in a lot of their memos that you see, that they, they do make the statement that there's not a lot of, um, I don't know what the right word of it, to, to say what is the best district for something like this. It is really hard to say what that is. Um, and I think they felt that, in comparison to the industrial district, to have to rezone, wind farms can take up million, you know, hundreds of acres. So that I think that the, the impact, they felt, was minimized in the agricultural districts, because you could still use the land as, as its, you know, its permitted use in the agricultural district, and allow for this alternate energy source to be intermixed in it and have minimal, you know, minimize the impacts as much as possible. Otherwise, you would be rezoning, whether it's industrial or another use, and having to have such great distances that you see in here, that you'd put a lot of, um, viable land out of production, otherwise, if it wasn't. That would be my best explanation for that.
I just wanted to say that I do support, on page four, as you mentioned, that you all would work on some wind electric generating device change to our zoning ordinance, so that within the city and the ETJ, we could start to set up the rules for, for having these. And as you do that, I encourage you to look at a variety of scales, you know, that there are small rooftop, uh, wind generating devices. I, I know one that isn't even like a windmill. It's kind of just shaped like a tube. Uh, it was designed at UIC, and then the technology was commercialized from the Chicago campus. There's a variety of scales, the 35-feet-tall ones, and then the hundreds of feet-tall ones, and that we, that we look at what's appropriate, at what sort of notice and input neighbors obviously need to have in that. And I'm sure these are all the issues you're looking at. So I look forward to seeing it, so that we can tell people what are the rules. I'm definitely getting neighbors and people interested in what are we, what are we doing? What's the university doing? How do we incorporate wind as one of our energy sources? So I look forward to that coming in the future. Thank you.
So far, we're not talking about residential on top and parking on the bottom, are we? Okay. All right. Anyone else? Well, there's a motion, and, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 No.
No.
Sorry. Pardon me. I withdraw my ayes.
All right. Let's win, oh, let's, let's try that one more again. Let's try that one more time. This is a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment. So if you favor the county having the wind farm, um, result, regulations, you need to vote no on this. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Absolute silence. Those opposed?
Aye.
No.
Okay. That motion is defeated. Moving on. Ordinance number 2009-05-045. An ordinance approving a final development plan for the planned unit development at 1002 South Lincoln Avenue and 805 West Iowa Street, the Neighbor House fraternity. And we do have, um, Gary Olson, the architect, and Michael Kinate, is that how you pronounce your name, um, from Neighbor House, if you have questions. Um, does anyone have a question?
I don't know.
Heather, okay.
Is anything, well, I guess I do have a question. Is there anything different than the last time we saw this?
No, um, that's why I wasn't really going to do a real presentation, other than the approvals that it went through. The Plan Commission recommended approval. It did go to the Design Review Board, because it's now in our Lincoln-Bucy overlay, and they had conditions that were put in here. Um, so everything, the plan itself is exactly the same as what you saw before. They did change, um, the fence around. There were two different dimensions. One said eight, I think, and six, and they changed it so it's all six all the way around. But otherwise, it has not changed, so all of the things would apply.
Okay. Well, Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I would move, um, ordinance number 2009-05-045. Um, and...
Second.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Smythe. Any further discussion?
Briefly.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, I just want to point out that this is, uh, they've worked very carefully with the neighborhood. They've gone through all the hoops. Uh, it's got, uh, it's got the things I talked about that were missing in the previous project of Mr. Wakelin's. This is what, this is what this project brings. Bioswells, geothermal, other, uh, other amenities, and, and, and an institutional quality building. So this is the kind of, of building that we should be encouraging. And I hope we do more of this stuff. I'd like to see us moving towards including some of these things as requirements in our zoning ordinance and in our building and construction stuff, uh, as we move forward. We need to incorporate sustainability in all new construction. So I highly recommend this. Thank you.
Robert Lewis?
I'd just like to make a comment. In our next caucus that we have, we need to sit down and have a serious conversation about zoning, uh, regulations, as it relates to the comprehensive plan. Uh, I think, unfortunately, we get a little confused about what they are really saying to us with regard to our, our, our zoning board. And I think we need to be absolutely clear as to what, where we are in our heads on where these things are for the future. Thanks.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
I was going to say something superficial. We've got 45 minutes of additional discussion, but we'll be willing to waive that.
I have a question.
Okay. Diane?
I, I love this project. It's wonderful. It's terrific. And I, you've got geothermal, you've got permeable parking, you've got bioswells and all that. Are you going for LEED certification in this building?
Well, we're going to follow the, the regulations. We're not going to actually apply for LEED, but we're, we, we think we'll be very close to, uh, at least a gold level.
Oh.
I'd like also to say that, uh, um, you know, just based on the previous approval by the city council and the recommendations and approval by the other, uh, you know, the Plan Commission and, uh, city staff, et cetera, that you approve the, um, you know, approve the ordinance tonight. And we had our quarterly board meeting yesterday, and, uh, we're very excited about the project, and glad that it is almost, uh, almost officially been approved, the final approval. And, uh, we definitely are looking, um, to build as quickly as possible as well. If we can, uh, get the funds available, or at least committed to, we'd like to maybe try and build within the next year. So, uh, but probably, you know, but so definitely looking at, you know, a, a short-term window for building, so.
And would you let us have a tour?
Yes.
Okay.
You should, you should know that, uh, we tested the new PUD ordinance that you have. We're the first ones to go through that process. Also, the UC Lincoln corridor was the first time we met with that group. Um, obviously, this is our second time meeting with you, and, uh, so far, we're batting a thousand, so don't ruin our percentage.
Brandon?
I just wanted to thank you both and congratulate you. You are a model of how to work with the neighborhood, to make a project that is really sensitive to their needs, and buffering, and parking, and turn-ins and pull-outs, and all the details. You've really been a model, and we're going to use you as the example when other people come to us, about how to work with the neighborhood and bring them in and design a building that's sensitive to its surroundings. So congratulations and thank you both.
I'll just make a, you know, comment on that, that, uh, we learned a lot the first time that we tried this several years ago, early 2001, 2002, whatever the exact year was.
Did you have an architect then?
No.
Oh.
No. But, uh, you know, we've worked a lot with, uh, city staff and Charlie as well, and, um, you know, our architect, but also with the Luna Neighborhood Association. And I think this does show that, you know, when neighbors and can cooperate together and work together, that you can come to a great resolution. So...
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you. I didn't get a single complaint about your last party.
Okay. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the staff helped out quite a bit on this, so I want to thank them as well.
Yeah. Okay. Um, next, I have some appointments I hope that you'll approve. For the Human Relations Commission, Eric Smith. For Neighborhood Safety Task Force, Barbara Lewis, and Maryann Downey.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Smythe and seconded by Lewis. Is there any discussion or any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.